I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose name we shall testify.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Daus-McBaugh?
Here.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Present.
All right, first up is presentations. We have a presentation from our Senator, Senator Scott Weiner. Senator.
Thank you. So, Mayor asked me to provide a brief legislative update, and so I'm happy to do so. And again, congratulations to everyone. So, we are going through a period of transition now. Of course, in Sacramento, we have our Governor-elect, who will be taking office on January 7th, Gavin Newsom, and I'm personally thrilled. I think he is going to be fantastic. And Governor Brown is also just amazing. But this is a changing of the guard, and I think we're going to see some different points of emphasis, which I think will be terrific. I think one of our key priorities this year, certainly for me, and I know for the Governor and the leadership of the Legislature, is around housing and homelessness, which is, as you know, because you hear from your constituents, from our constituents, every day, people who are struggling, don't know how they're going to make rent, getting evicted, families that have to leave or have to live hours away from where they work, and it's just not sustainable anymore in the growth in homelessness. And yes, around mental health and addiction, but also people who are not mentally ill and not addicted, but simply can't afford a place to live and are living in their cars or in RVs or in shelters. And we have an obligation to do things differently in California, because what we're doing now isn't working. And so, there will be another big focus this year to try to make it easier to create housing at all income levels in California. To, as you know, I have a bill that's been quite controversial, but we continue to work on it and bring it back to allow more housing near public transportation, near jobs, because we have a three-and-a-half million home deficit in California. And if we're going to add three-and-a-half million homes, we should add them near where people work and where they can access public transportation, instead of forcing people to drive long distances. We are also, and I know that Assemblyman Ting has been a real leader, and I'm happy to support his efforts around expanding accessory dwelling units, in-law units, which is a great way to add more housing, so he'll be working on that again. And we're going to increase, we've already increased, and we'll do some more work to increase what we invest in affordable housing for lower-income people, people who are at the greatest risk of homelessness and being displaced. And then I have a bill, Senate Bill 48, to create a right to shelter in the state of California. In too many parts of California, homeless people simply cannot access shelter. There either are no shelters, entire counties, not a single shelter bed in some counties, or only in the winter, and we need to make sure that as we transition people into permanent housing, people do not have to sleep on the street or in their car. So, that's going to be a huge focus, and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to make some change this year. Of course, the wildfires are going, have to be a continuing focus for our state, and as the Governor calls it, our new abnormal, and I want to keep it abnormal as we try to get back to the way that things should be in California, where we do not have a year-round practically wildfire season, and where we don't have entire towns burning down. The devastation that these wildfires have caused, it's almost impossible to comprehend having an entire town burned down. And so, we are doing a number of things. First of all, of course, we have to keep being a leader on climate and fighting climate change, even as our off-the-rails federal government continues to deny that climate change is actually happening, or that human beings have anything to do with it. We're moving towards 100% renewable energy in the state of California. We are, of course, just, you know, working very hard to create options for people to drive less, so we're burning less fossil fuel, and we have to do what we can. But that's going to take time, and we need to make sure that we're providing relief for the people who have lost their homes, that we're supporting CAL FIRE, so we have the firefighting resources that we need, and that we're improving our forestry practices. We're also very focused, again, on criminal justice reform, and that's been a big area of success in the last number of years. California led the way in bad criminal justice policy and mass incarceration, to the point where our prison system was unconstitutional, because we simply didn't have the space. And we built dozens of new prisons, instead of investing in UC and CSU, and, you know, just tearing apart communities, people spending a long time in prison for nonviolent offenses and drug offenses. And so, we have been decreasing our prison population. We have been taking the approach that people should be accountable for their behavior, but accountability doesn't mean spending such a massive amount of time in prison that you come out not able to reintegrate into society. And I'm really looking for alternatives to incarceration and not having a situation where, for example, the Los Angeles County jails are the largest mental health providers in the United States. You shouldn't have to go to jail to get mental health and addiction services, so we're really focusing in those areas, and I know that that's going to be a focus again this year. And then, of course, California and Daly City, San Francisco, and everywhere, we have a major problem with poverty. We have the high, when you take cost of living into account, California is at the top in terms of percentage of people living in poverty, almost half of children in California, and when you take cost of living into account, are living in poverty. And so, we, and I know that Governor like Newsom is very focused on this, about how do we lift people out of poverty. And we know that one way you do it is supporting families, for example, with childcare and early childhood education, to make sure that people can have children and also work and support those children. We're working to expand access to food support for people who need it, and just really making sure that we do everything in our power to help lift people up. And then, of course, we are going to protect healthcare access in California. We've seen that our uninsured rate is starting to creep up because of what this administration and this Congress did to the Affordable Care Act by getting rid of the individual mandate. And so, we are focused on strategies for how we can keep, we made so much progress in reducing our uninsured population, expanding Medicare and so forth, we have to keep up that momentum, so that will be a very, very high priority. There's many more things I could talk about, but those are some of the key areas that we're focusing on. My, and of course, we're going to continue to work on the CAL Palace. That is not over. And anything that we can ever do to be of assistance, where I am at your disposal, and I look forward to continuing to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Weiner. I think one of the things that you mentioned is that the CAL Palace, the gun, the gun shows, and so, we were very supportive of that, and we hope that you bring that back rather soon.
Yes, and if I may say, with the CAL Palace, and I've said this publicly, that, you know, unfortunately, and I'm committed to ending the gun shows at the CAL Palace, but unfortunately, the gun shows are the tip of the iceberg in terms of the challenges in working with the CAL Palace. And I know that Daly City, for years, has attempted to work with the CAL Palace to actually do something more productive with that land. It's such an ideal place for housing, for retail, for job creation, and it's not, and San Francisco has a strong interest as well, right on the border. So much could happen with that property. The CAL Palace itself is in terrible shape, and whether it stays or goes, if it stays, you know, then those development opportunities can work to help shore up the CAL Palace. So, we're taking a broader look for next year, including getting rid of the gun shows, but going beyond that, and Assemblyman Ting and I are working closely together on that.
Great. All right. Any questions from our council members? Senator Weiner, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and again, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the November 26 minutes?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I just want to abstain for the minutes, because I wasn't sitting at the dais for the minutes.
That's correct. You as well, Mr. Daus-McBaugh?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let me go to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Someone?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Let me go to the consent agenda. Any council members would like to pull, I would like to pull item number 10, which is the retirement of Fay Sukang, and also number 11, which is the retirement of Nubia Limon. In addition to number 10 and 11, any other council members want to pull an item?
Yeah, I would just like to pull item number one, just for the simplicity of letting the public know.
All right, anyone else?
With the exception of items 1, 10, and 11, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those items are approved. Let me, let me go to number one, the acceptance of fiscal 2018 comprehensive annual financial report. Who can speak on that? Mr. Chu.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present the comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the cover for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2018. The fiscal year 2018 financial statement has been audited by our auditor, Mason Associates. This audit includes comprehensive review of the city financial record and the internal control procedure. The auditor has issued a clean and unmodified opinion that the city financial statement are presented in compliance of the general, generally accepted accounting principles. The city submitted cover to the Government Finance Officer Association, and has been awarded certificate of excellency in financial reporting for the last 31 years, and staff will submit the same cover for consideration. So, just in light of overview of the general fund result, the total general fund revenue for the fiscal year 2018 was 86.7 million, and the total general fund expenditure are 83.3, 83.9 million, resulting in a positive general fund balance of 2.8 million. When the city adopted a budget for fiscal year 2019 and 2020 by a new budget, it included use of 4.8 million in fiscal year 2019 and 6.1 million in 2020 to close the general fund funding gap. In accordance with the city financial policy, any prior surplus are considered to be one-time money that should be used to pay, that should not be used to pay for ongoing costs. So, the 2.8 million surplus in fiscal year 2018 will be used to replenish the general fund reserves. So, now we look at the general fund reserve. After the year audit, the general fund reserve for fiscal year 2018 is at 21.9 million, or 26% of the general fund reserve, and the council has a general fund, an aside fund balance policy equal to 15% of the annual budget expenditure, so we are above the council policy. But in 2019, we draw down 4.8 million from the general fund reserve to balance a budget. So, the project unaside fund balance for fiscal year 2019 will decrease to 15.8 million. That is equal to 18% of the general fund reserve, still above the 15% council policy. And in fiscal year 2020, another 6.1 million will be drawn from the general fund reserve to close a budget. At that time, the project unaside general fund balance will decrease to 9.7 million. That is equal to 10.7% of the general fund reserve, which is below the council policy of 15%. So, again, it depends on the revenue situation for the fiscal year 19 and 20. We might be able to balance the budget if we keep the expenditure under very tight control. I'll now answer any question that you may have.
Any questions? Ms. Di Giovanni?
I just have a quick, just for clarity for the, for the public. They were asking me, so this particular audit is not considered a forensic audit, but isn't it just like taking into account of everybody that turns in reports to the consultant?
The audit is for all the entity within the Daly City, so that means that is all the financial statement.
Okay. Prepare it on their own.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item one?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Hearing none, that item is approved. Let me go on to item number 10, which is commending Fay Sukang on the occasion of her retirement. Is Fay here? Oh, come on up, Ms. Fay. We want to commend you on your retirement, and we want to congratulate you on all your years of service here in Daly City. We always value people like you who have, who have committed themselves to our city and this, and your wonderful job that you're doing. Would you like to say a few words? Nope? That's all right, okay. So, thank you for, on behalf of a grateful city, for your service and commitment to helping us, and we wish you the best of luck. Thank you, Fay.
May I, may I add a few words to Fay? Fay has been very extremely helpful, especially like when we, for the last almost 30 years, handling all different type of, like, accounting transactions, the general ledger control, and for the last year, she helped Danica on the payroll, and without her support, it would be extremely difficult to, to perform the payroll function within the city. So, thank you, Fay, for your commitment to the city.
Thank you, Fay.
Thank you, Fay.
Can I get a motion to approve her, commending her retirement?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, congratulations again. Item number 11, commending Nubia Limon on the occasion of her retirement. Nubia? How you doing? Thank you for hanging in there and coming to and staying all this time for us to commend you on your retirement as well, on behalf of a grateful city as well. We want to thank you for all the year, tremendous years of service here in Daly City and its employees like you that make our city great. So, thank you very much. Anyone else might want to make comment? Lawrence?
Yes, I want to thank you, Nubia, collecting all the revenue for the city, include the sales tax, property tax, you named that, all the tests, all the revenue, all the permit, and all the building, and all the rents for the city. Thanks for bringing in all the revenue for the city and helping us to balance the budget. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? If not, hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 11 on commending her retirement?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, congratulations once again. All right, now let's go on to the public hearings. We have a public hearing, item number 15, on the community develop and housing needs. Who's going to present to that? Ms. Illegan? Good evening, Ms. Illegan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. The city receives community development block grant from CDBG and home funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. These funds may be used for program administration, housing, public services, capital improvements, and economic development, and the home funds are used for the development of affordable housing. In FY 1819, the city received $1,057,728 in CDBG and $412,180 in home funds. We do not yet know how much we will be getting in FY 1920. As a requirement to receiving these funds, the city prepares a five-year consolidated plan that identifies housing and community development needs and the goals for addressing those needs. The consolidated plan goals are briefly summarized in the staff report. For each year during the planning period, the city prepares an annual action plan that allocates how the CDBG and home funds for the program year will be spent. Tonight is the first year in beginning the preparation for the FY 1920 annual action plan, which is the second year of the consolidated plan period, but also the second year of a two-year CDBG funding cycle. It being the second year of the two-year funding cycle, programs and activities that are currently receiving CDBG funds may have their contracts renewed for FY 1920 pending the availability of FY 1920 funds. Although there will be no RFP issued for FY 1920, there is still a community, a community participation requirement for preparing each annual action plan. Today's public hearing is part of meeting that community participation requirement. It provides the public an opportunity to inform the council of housing and community development needs in our city. Notice of this hearing was published in the Examiner and was made available on the city's website, the city clerk's office, the community service center, and libraries. Staff is available to provide additional information.
Thank you, Ms. Illegan. Let me open the public hearing at this point. Do we have any questions from the council? No questions? Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Can I get a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, can I get a roll call?
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Daus-McBaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye. Thank you very much. Let me go on to communications, which is item number 16, the use permit and design review for Hilldale School expansion at 2570 and 79 Florence Street. Mr. Von Lookheisen. No? Okay, there you are.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I need to recuse myself, because the Chair of the Planning Commission, I have already voted on this item, so please excuse me during this item.
Ms. Zimmerman, is that?
She's choosing to recuse herself.
Does that, would that apply?
Don't upside me as well. Yeah.
You may, it's not a pure legal conflict.
All right, we'll call you when you need. Sorry.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, we're having a little bit of a problem with the overhead projector, but I'm going to go ahead and give a presentation anyway.
Yeah.
So, you have the packet in front of you, of course. This is a request by the Hilldale School to modify an existing use permit the city granted in 2016, at which time the city council allowed these enrollment at the school to increase to 150 from 119 students. At that time, there was a proposal for a drop-off area close to the Point Pacific turnaround. You may recall that. That might be coming up. And the, since that time, the applicants proposed essentially a different turnaround at the end of Thier Street. So, the turnaround would just be relocated from the currently proposed location to the Thier Street location, and there's a site plan in your packet that shows where that would occur. And that's the essence of the request for the amended use permit. In addition, the applicant's proposing the construction of new school buildings. So, previously, it was the applicant's plan to, to utilize existing school buildings, and he's actually seeing that there's a need right now to actually replace or actually construct new school buildings, and there are elevations that are also in your packet that show what those buildings might look like. The applicant operates a school in Sacramento, and the architectural style of the proposed buildings would be along the lines of those school buildings in Sacramento, and it's actually very high-quality architecture. We had very few conditions of approval related to it. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this item and did recommend approval to you. If there's any questions, of course, the staff's available to answer those, as well as the applicant is here tonight.
Any questions? Mr. Sylvester?
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I am aware that the parking lot that's going to create one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine parking spaces?
Yes.
And since we were acquiescing and giving up part of a street, that that would be public parking as well?
Yes, that's correct. The, the public will have, have access to this, and on the, on the overhead?
Right.
This is kind of odd. The overhead that you see, there are nine parking spaces that would be publicly accessible. The applicant would perform street improvements inside the Thier Street right-of-way.
So...
At this location.
So, I would assume that the applicant will not put up signs saying, "Teaching staff only," to keep potential folks from parking?
No, that would not be allowed.
And I do understand the need for parking, and will there be an ordinance to say, "No public parking," say, between the hours of school hours, or you're just going to permit public parking at any time?
There's really no plan currently to restrict any sort of parking to anybody for any certain amount of hours. It's, the applicants volunteered to construct that right-of-way improvement without any sort of condition.
Thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, along the lines of Vice Mayor, will there be signage that state that it's a public parking? I mean, it may not state the other, other, but will it delineate that?
No, normally, we wouldn't improve the public right-of-way without signs that say, "Public parking."
So then, there's no way the public would know, or?
Not really, unless they, yeah, they would come to know it, I think, probably be the way that that would happen.
How, how do we do it on other, like, public parking areas?
Well, you know, the, probably, the best example might be, for example, Southgate Avenue in the Westlake Shopping Center. We have some angled parking spaces there. Those are, you know, available to the public, but they're not, you know, signed that way. But we do understand what you're saying. Maybe the city engineer can...
Yes, just to be clear, the, the proposed parking is within city's right-of-way, so that is all within city right-of-way. It's not private parking. It's similar to any other parking within the city that's part of the city right-of-way. And as a result of that, then it is public parking.
I understand. However, if it's city right-of-way parking, they are subject to city ordinances, and the California Vehicle Code, like, if somebody calls and complains that a vehicle's there in excess of over 72 hours, then we would take the necessary steps to either put a mark on the vehicle, and if it still doesn't move, we can tow it.
That, that's absolutely correct. This is enforceable by the city. It is in our right-of-way. It'll comply with any other parking that's within the city right-of-way.
Any other questions? Any further comments?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Michael. Item number 17, which is the finding of public convenience and necessity to sell alcoholic beverages. Oh, I'm sorry, let's call the other council members, please.
Can you mute the image? Can you mute the image? Does it mute image on the line?
Welcome back. Okay, item number 17, which is the finding of public convenience and necessity to sell alcoholic beverages for an off-site consumption at Bay Shore Market at 2800 Geneva Avenue. Mr. Von Lookheisen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. We don't have a PowerPoint for this item, and in fact, staff doesn't have a recommendation on this item. The city council receives information from the city staff and makes a determination whether the request merits a need of public convenience and necessity. So, essentially, there are instances when the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control routes to the city council, the need to find that the, there's a, what's called a public convenience and necessity exists for the allowance of an additional retail alcohol sale outlet. The applicant, in this case, is the market, Bay Shore Market at 2800 Geneva Avenue. The applicant, in this case, is the market, Bay Shore Market at 2800 Geneva Avenue. The ABC has informed the city that there are, there's an over-concentration of alcohol-related uses. It is of note that a lot of those uses, seven of the uses, seven of the eight to be exact, are located at 440 Talbert Street, which is used as a warehousing location. But since ABC categorizes those along with type 20 licenses, such as the one that's proposed, the form that they use essentially calculates there's over-concentration of such retail outlets in this census tract. So the City Council is asked to make a determination whether there's a public convenience and necessity that's warranted here. From the applicant's standpoint, there is a desire for his market to become full-service, so to speak. Currently, there's no alcohol sales there at all, so patrons who, you know, might buy other things at his market are forced to either go to another market or skip the market altogether to buy, for example, beer or wine. So that is a, one of the considerations that he's advancing to you.
So let me start the discussion by saying, I do have a concern when it comes to urban blight and the effect of an oversaturation of alcohol in an area where we are trying to improve upon the neighborhood, and I think we have to take seriously what we do as a council when we make these decisions about the effects on the neighborhood and what could contribute to the urban blight, or whether or not, you know, we're doing more harm than good as far as the general overall picture. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Okay. Do we know what the crime rate or problems that are associated with that neighborhood?
It's on page two.
Yes, and there is a finding on the second page of the staff report. There's a standard piece of research that the city staff conducts in advancing its findings to the City Council. ABC has two reasons for forwarding alcohol retail vendors to the City Council, and one is for over-concentration, which is the reason this is before you, and the other is for high crime. The high-crime calculation actually did not warrant the item to be moved to you for consideration based on high crime. Nonetheless, we did provide crime statistics, and we can review those if you'd like, and they are provided in the staff report, I guess.
Yeah, I was wanting you to explain it to the public so that they have more of a...
Sure.
...favor.
Yes. So essentially, there's a couple of components to the crime reporting that would be involved in the consideration of this sort of a use. There are essentially 14 crime-reporting districts in Daly City. The subject location is in Crime District Number One, and between January 1st, 2013, and December 31st of 2017, the Police Department reported 604 total offenses within that five-year period. The average number of reporting offenses in the entire city per district is 826. So because the 604 is less than 826, the crime-reporting district that the Bay Shore Market falls into is not considered high crime. And then the second component of that is site-specific. We asked the Police Department, when we refer this matter to them, for their data input. It relates directly, again, to this site, and there were, in the period between January 1st, 2013, and December 31st, 2017, a total of 88 calls for service in the crime-reporting district that were alcohol-related specifically. So the first figure I gave you was not related to alcohol. The 88 is. There were no calls for service related to the subject business, however, in this crime reporting period. So in those number of years, this particular business has had no calls for service related to alcohol.
Okay. Any questions from the council? No? Okay. Can we get the applicant to step forward? Good evening, sir. Can you state your name for the record?
Suriad Turkman.
Okay. How long have you had the market there on Geneva?
2009, we opened July 2009.
Okay. And do you understand my concern about urban blight and what could affect the neighborhood and the community?
I understand. The only thing is, we're not trying to sell customers like a single beer or somebody that's, you know, coming in for... We have a family-oriented store, and a lot of people come in, they'll buy the groceries, buy the meat and the vegetables, and they ask me, "Do you have beer or wine?" So we send them down the street, which is kind of off the street and into McDonald Avenue to buy the liquor store down the street, and we're losing a lot of business because we don't have the alcohol beverage. But we're trying to complete the store menu by adding the, just beer and wine, no hard liquor. So there's just somebody coming in, asking for a six-pack of beer to take home, and we're not into selling the cheap kind of beer. We just want to sell like family-oriented.
Okay. So it's just beer and wine, nothing like brandy or whiskey or something harder?
No hard liquor, just beer and wine for, you know, the customers that, you know, on Sunday they want to go watch the football game or something, they come in, grab their meat, grab their vegetables. We just want to have the full menu where we can supply them with the beer and wine, whatever they need.
What about, what is your store experience by way of, you know, people loitering around there, or...
We don't have any of that. Dollar Tree's next door, and we have McDonald's on the other side, and Kentucky Fried Chicken on the other side. So we're just, it's a main street, Bay Shore, I mean, Geneva is a very main street, and a lot of cars pass by, and they park the car, they want to grab something and go. So it's like, more like a neighborhood and a traffic area where people shop, you know, on the way to the airport or on the way to home.
I see. Okay. Any questions? Mr. Julian, Ms....
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Manalo.
I do have a question. You mentioned that it's only beer and wine. With this particular, I guess, the approval of it, if so, is there any way that you'd be able to sell hard liquor? I know you're saying that it's just beer and wine.
Yeah, it's just beer and wine.
Okay, and there's no... Okay.
That's a different type of license.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Yes, please. So when you say that there's a family, just they want beer and wine, but you really have an indication of like, because there's no way to know because you're not selling it yet, what will they use it for? Will they be outside with the wine? Because just because it's not hard liquor doesn't mean that it doesn't really cause alcohol issues in the neighborhood, like where the families are in the Bay Shore. So that's a concern of mine as well. People just say hard liquor, but, you know, people that have issues with alcohol can also have issues with alcohol in that, with beer and wine. So that's just a concern in the Bay Shore, because they have, again, it's an urban, as you were speaking there.
What is the remedy for us if we decide that, let's say we approve this item, and then we find out that it's not a good thing, and it's not working, or it's contributing to the crime, or it's resulting in problems we didn't want to anticipate or have? What remedy do we have? Can we pull it? Can we suspend it? What can we do?
So the responsible agency for enforcing liquor violations would be ABC itself, the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control of the State of California. The city would have, I believe, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, limited ability in that regard, aside from just enforcing regular municipal laws, because there's no use permit that's associated with this sort of use. It's either the PCN, the PCN that the City Council would be acting on tonight is the permit approval, and taking that back would probably be difficult.
It would. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Sir, through the chairs, your place of business, eating establishment?
No, it's off-sale, retail sales.
Are you applying for a type 20 license?
Yes, sir, off-sale.
For staff, at this present time, there are two other eating places within two to four-block proximity, such as a type 41 license indicated as Nick's Kitchen, and a type 47 as Service America.
Right. The latter is, I believe, a Cal Palace Special Events.
Absolutely. So subsequently, that's on the 2600 block of Geneva. Your other type 41, where they can consume on the premise, is 2449. Our applicant is asking for a permit at the 2800 block for off-sale for folks to take with them. They will not be consuming on premises. Is that correct?
I can guarantee that.
Yes, sir.
And I also noticed that other type 20s off-sale presents an unfair advantage to this applicant because you have 440 Talbert Street, which is a warehouse, and they basically do the same as well. Is that correct?
Just to clarify, what's happening at 440 Talbert is internet sales, so alcohol is vend into the public but not at that location. Is it actually transacted? The mail-order wine essentially is what's happening there.
All right. And they also, at 440 Talbert Street, have a type 85 license. So basically, our applicant here is only asking for a type 20, just to sell beer and wine, not to consume on premises.
No consumption on premises.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Mr. Doss McBaugh?
Will, like, if we decide to offer or to approve this permit, will there be any type of advertising of the alcohol that you'll be selling?
No, we're just, no advertising at all. We just, we'll have a sign outside saying, "We now have beer and wine." But there's a store down the street, they sell beer and wine, and they have no problem there. If somebody wants to cause a problem, they can cause a problem, whether by my store or their store or the other store. But we try to minimize the problems by, if we see somebody that's already drunk or making problems, we will not be selling them any alcohol at all.
What would you say the foot traffic of young people through that area?
There's a few young people because the neighborhood is growing, and there's a lot of new families in the area. But they're all like little kids. They go to school down the street. And there's also the middle school. But we will be making sure that nobody under age will be buying any of that.
Can we make it a condition of approval that there be no advertising?
So this is unique in a sense that we're not technically the issuers of the license. You could definitely state it in the resolution, but it's the ABC who's really governs the alcohol. So I don't know how enforceable it would be necessarily. It's, you make a finding of public necessity to allow for it, and this just gets submitted to the ABC, and ABC considers it for the issuance of the license. So they need this in order to do that. But you can definitely add that as a condition. I just can't guarantee that it's entirely enforceable because we don't issue the license.
What we have done in the past is, I think, in the case of flyers and ceremony, is they volunteer, they voluntarily agreed not to do something. In that case, it was, I think they were going to get a type 21 license but only sell beer and wine. I mean, you could have an agreement with the applicant that he not post any external displays of alcohol sales, for what that's worth.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or further discussion? No? Okay. Do I have a motion? Any motion to adopt? Well, I guess it's just council determination, right?
It's just a determination to make a finding for the PCN or to deny the request for public convenience. Two options.
So let me say, on the one hand, I am glad to know that this is not going to be more than just beer and wine. I think that is kind of a critical thing for me. Wine, I don't really have any problems with, nor do I have any problems with beer, but it's the hard stuff that I have an issue with. It seems like you're a good neighbor. I'm not hearing any problems in terms of your business, and...
We've been 90 years and no problems.
Yeah, and so the sense I'm getting from you is that you're sincere in what you're trying to do, and that you will take, I think, care and make sure that you're not contributing to urban blight in our neighborhood, that you will be mindful of the kids, that you will not do any advertising that will promote alcohol and drinking. So I'm of the mindset of giving you a chance, but I'm interested in hearing what other council members think before we, I call for a vote. Ms. Manalo?
Well, the adjacency to the location, as you mentioned, you're close to the Bay Shore Middle School, Elementary School. That, to me, is, you know, having considered a liquor store, but you mentioned it's just beer and wine, right? And I think that it's important that there is what was mentioned as well, like not, like signage or advertising that I see usually around stores that have either liquor or beer or wine, right? Like, there'll be advertisements from vendors nationally or whatnot, which, you know, would attract kind of, I don't know, if there's, you know, usage of it in a way. But for me, yeah, I think that, given what you've mentioned, and you've been there for nine years, and that there would be kind of not that marketing or so outside is important. So I think for me, it's, you know, as if anything, you know, you're a responsible business owner, and you understand that, you know, how close you are to families, and you serve the families, as you mentioned, right? So...
Any other comments? Ms. Giovanni?
Yes. First, thank you. You do seem very responsible, and you care about the community, but also, but you can't control human behavior. So for me, when you go out the doors, it wouldn't be your fault, but in that neighborhood, where there's a lot of young kids I see when I go visit the Bay Shore, and seniors that are walking around, there's no guarantee that really that beer is going to be, someone's not going to be drinking it and going, because they have reports sometimes from the, the police has to respond over in the Bay Shore. The seniors have told me about alcohol, even though it is, may not be directly responsible on your end of it. But human behavior is what, how do you control that? You can't. So that's a concern in that area.
Any other comments?
I'm for, thank you, Ms. Mayor, I'm for businesses to thrive. You made one statement, and that is, you feel that business could be better if you offered beer and wine. In reading the staff report, I see no evidence that an increase in crime would occur. In reading the staff report, I see no evidence that an increase in crime would occur. And as to the city attorney's comment, it's the ABC that will regulate that license. If you violate any of the restrictions of the ABC, such as selling to minors, contributing to the delinquency of a minor, that's going to come on you.
Oh, yes.
And, and once you get caught, all it takes is just one. They have them working in plainclothes assignments. So we care about our city, but at the same time, we want you to thrive. Had the crime reports showed me differently, I would be against you having it. But I can't see how we can not say that you can't have it.
All right, any other comments? No? All right, do we take a formal vote?
I guess we just have a motion to allow it in public necessity.
All right, I'll make that motion to, for a finding of, to allow it in public necessity.
I'll second.
Right, roll call.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
No.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Mark Barul?
No.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye. Okay, so that item faxes. We are hopeful that you will continue to be a good businessman and good neighbor, but we'll be watching, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Giovanni.
All right, let's go on to item number 18, approve and adopt resolutions certifying November 6, 2018 election results. Ms. Malo.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and first and foremost, congratulations on the superb reorg, and I have Hey Jude stuck in my head. But it's a good thing to have stuck in my head, so congratulations to all. Tonight, staff is recommending that the city council approve the resolutions that are declaring the results of the November 6 election. I apologize for stating the obvious, but for prosperity and for purposes of the resolution, we have three new council members, Ray Buenaventura, Pamela D. Giovanni, and Rod Das Magual. We also have three ballot measures that passed, that would be Measure BB, which was providing an increase for a business license tax. We also have a transient occupancy tax rate that increased from 10 to 12 percent, and that was Measure VV, and then Measure UU is the cannabis business tax. Staff is just recommending that the council adopt a resolution that certifies these results.
All right, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions?
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Magbual?
Aye.
Sorry. Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye, okay, that resolution is adopted. Moving on to item number 19, which is the second reading ordinance, 1424, planned development standards at ceremony views. Ms. Zimmerman.
Again, ceremony views, I believe, I have to recuse myself because we already voted on that at the planning.
Myself as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We'll call you when we're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading of the ordinance for the PD standards of PD 57A ceremony views. This came before the council as an introduction of the ordinance, and it is before the council this evening for adoption.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
All right, then we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye. Great, maybe we can bring him back, and we can do item number 20. Okay, item number 20, which is the second reading of the repealing and replacing the inclusionary housing ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is also for adoption, this came before the council by way of introduction of the second reading for ordinance number 1423, and is before the council this evening for adoption.
Any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt ordinance?
Second.
All right, can we get a roll call? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, this is on item 21.
There's 20.
Yes, okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, so can we get a roll call?
Sure. Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Aye.
I know, I apologize. Mr. Rod, thank you.
Dr. Rod.
Dr. Rod, better yet. Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye, all right, thank you for that. Item number 21, which is the adding to the Daily City Municipal Code regarding minimum wage, this was continued from the November 26 city council meeting, Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The staff is here if they wanted to provide any additional information. This is, comes before the council as a second reading and reintroduction. As it stands, there was some additional language presented for the council, a direction to include subsection D, minimum wage, and Stephen is here if you want to add anything to that as well. The ordinance was published and available at the city clerk's office, and it is in your pocket if there's any additional questions.
Go ahead, do you have any questions?
Yes, actually. Yeah, I had spoken to staff earlier for clarification, and that I had asked the staff for the, to include the language of the city of Belmont with the CPI, the 3.5 cap, as there had been a concern, language, and as well as a CBA waiver, which is the language that is in all ordinances in every city, even though our hourly employees are not part of a current union here too, but could be in the future, but it's to be consistent. And ask for additional information for the council, if they were able to provide the council with the information that this, to increase the minimum wage ordinance is only a minimum wage ordinance, and it would not, with the number that was given in the prior that I read in the minimum wage, it said that it would affect 269 employees, but at the same time, that's considered that step program in compaction, but this is a separate ordinance, and really should not have an impact, and that, I was wondering if you had that information from the other cities to provide to the council, in that it would only impact certainly hourly, rather than all this step program, because it is not considered a raise, it's considered a minimum wage ordinance policy. Thank you.
Okay, so let me start out by saying that the other cities in San Mateo County that I have information on, okay, it's only two so far, I'm waiting on Redwood City, but Belmont actually adjusted the ranges for all of their hourly workers.
All hourly.
Yeah, and so on their wage schedule for hourly employees, they kind of start at the bottom, you know, with the minimum wage, and then work their way through the rest, and everyone kind of gets an increase based on the new base rate, which is the minimum wage. San Mateo is only adjusting hourly rates for four classifications in their hourly workers, and I'm not sure about Redwood City. In Daly City, for the past three years, 2016, 17, and 18, we're also subject to minimum wage requirements set by the state, so our human resources department brings that before the council, and actually, the decision in the past was always to adjust all of the wages, starting with the new minimum wage as the base for, you know, hourly classification 101, step one. And then after that, you kind of work through and you preserve the 5% increase between steps and et cetera.
And is that policy, and written policy?
The policy is not actually written anywhere, it's set by you on the council. So if we're just looking back to how we've done it in the past with minimum wage, we've always extended it to all of the hourly workers in their classification. We start at the H101, and then we continue the increases to kind of preserve that wage chart. So that's what the council has decided in the past since 2016.
Yeah, so again, that's what the council has set, but it's not written, a written policy? Okay, I just want to make sure.
It's policy set by the council.
Set by the council.
Yeah.
So that 269 could, yes.
256, yeah.
256, pardon me. And that was almost $600,000 that we were quoted the last time, that would be an increase. But it was just a minimum wage ordinance that, to me, through the attorney or the council members here, that would not be considered a raise, it would be considered just a minimum wage ordinance, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues.
Any comments? I have some speaker cards, maybe I'll go to that first. Let me call up Melinda Dart.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Good evening, and congratulations, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and members of the council. On behalf of the San Mateo Central Labor Council and the 11,716 union members who live in Daly City, I rise to urge city council to adopt a minimum wage ordinance of $15 by 2020 or sooner. Daly City is, of course, as you all know, the largest city in San Mateo County, and the median age is 39 years old, so people are in their prime working years, earning years here in Daly City. Seventy percent of the population is in the labor force, but about 10% of all households in the city do earn below the federal poverty level of $25,000 per year for a family of four. And unfortunately, female-headed households with children fare the worst, 18% are below the federal poverty level. And 30% of the households in Daly City, which works out to 9,400 families, earn under $50,000 a year. So given the average rent now in Daly City of $3,241 a month for a two-bedroom apartment, you can pretty much figure that a family of four needs to take home after taxes at least $38,900 a year just to cover the rent. So even if we raise minimum wage here, which we hope we do, $31,200 a year is not enough to even cover the average rent of a two-bedroom. According to the self-sufficiency calculator, by insight, a family of four needs to actually earn closer to $126,000 to be self-sufficient and healthy. And I will wrap this up just by saying, this is a start, we do need to do this, and I'm very, I commend you all for considering it, and we suggest a bump in 2019, getting to $15 an hour by 2020 with subsequent annual consumer price index raises. And we all have a vested interest in attracting and retaining a quality workforce in Daly City, so thank you for taking this under consideration.
Thank you, Melinda. Raina Lehman?
I don't forget my notes, thank you.
Okay.
Big congratulations to everybody, big congratulations to the new mom on the council. San Mateo County Labor Council strongly supports action on the minimum wage ordinance for Daly City, which has been in discussion for about two years. In the interest of fairness for all businesses and a realistic notification period, we propose the following timeline, 1350 by July 2019, $15 by January 2020, which will align with Redwood City, $15 plus CPI, January 2021, with that 3.5% cap, which aligns with Belmont. And to codify the annual CPI adjustment to avoid any wage stagnation as costs of living rise, we support the stronger, the suggestion of stronger enforcement language and the CBA opt-out. In Mountain View, a city with a similar poverty rate, the city council there moved the minimum wage to $15 in 2018, with an increase to $15.65 an hour in 2019, recognizing that this higher wage gives employers access to more potential employees, and of course, lifts the floor for all of the workers that we are trying to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Nemeier? Nemeier?
Thank you. Hello, thank you for having me. So my name is Andrea Nemeier, I'm the Program Specialist of Higher Education with the United Way Bay Area, and United Way currently funds Spark Point Centers at every community college in the San Mateo Community College District, including Kenyatta College, Skyland College, and College of San Mateo, and I am the lead at all those sites. United Way partners with these Spark Point Centers to provide services to college students with the goal of increasing financial literacy and reducing poverty. We implement many strategies, including financial coaching, career coaching, and services addressing food insecurity. These financial education centers are designed to serve individuals and families who are working to achieve financial self-sufficiency. However, one thing that we cannot assist with is the rate of minimum wage in relation to the cost of living. The college students in San Mateo County are a powerful, creative, and engaged group. We recently held a career prep day outside of college, and we had over 80 participants attend in a few hours. They show an interest and dedication in bettering themselves, and they display a strong drive in moving forward. The student population in San Mateo County is very diverse, however, one thing that they all have in common is that they are all at this stage where they have to obtain entry-level work. Many of the jobs available for entry-level college students are minimum wage jobs. The rate of minimum wage directly impacts not only the community in general, but also the standard of living for a college student population. Regardless of the work that we do and the steps that we take to assist our Spark Point college students in fostering financial self-sufficiency, they will continue to fight an uphill battle if the minimum wage continues to be much lower than the cost of living in San Mateo County. United Way and Spark Point both work to provide financial education in hopes of creating stronger communities and financially stable adults. We hope that you will join us in these efforts by raising the rate of minimum wage to reflect the cost of living, and also join us in the movement of financial stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Evert?
Avery.
Avery. There you go.
So congratulations, new council members, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Jack Avery, I'm a public policy analyst at United Way Bay Area. I was actually here last month to speak a little bit about the ordinance, and so again, we still, you know, support raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour. I don't need to tell you that it's expensive and it needs to be done. We also, you know, support pegging the minimum wage to CPI, which basically just increases the minimum wage with the cost of living. We really see it as like a standard best practice when implementing minimum wage, it's, you know, the California minimum wage will be rolling out, pegging it to the CPI in 2023, and many other cities that have, you know, rolled out a minimum wage have done it as well. So we're really, you know, advocating and asking that you do so. And then also, as my colleague Raina from the San Mateo Labor Council suggested, you know, if you're considering the proposal that she's put forward, I think it is a great compromise of raising the minimum wage with enough planning time of six months rather than immediately to 1350, and then it'll be bringing in the CPI once it's necessary after already going to $15 an hour. So that's, you know, pretty much all I have tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, all right. I have no other speaker cards, so let's have a discussion. Ms. Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, included in the language is the CPI, as discussed in our prior council meeting, that we would actually correlate the minimum wage according to the CPI, and that's the language that we have here. That was the language that wasn't in the prior ordinance at the last meeting, and it's indicated here in the ordinance now. One change I'd like to see is the adjustment cap of 3.5%, and that is similar to what was mentioned earlier in Belmont, but the language stated in the ordinance does coincide with the CPI. What we have here in the ordinance is I know that we need to expedite- What we have here in the ordinance is I know that we need to expedite kind of having, you know, individuals and families raise the minimum wage faster than we can. But the ordinance that we have proposed here is expediting it a year earlier than the state and then also in 2020, moving it a bit higher. This was a discussion that we've had prior. I know that this has been work that has been brought about for the last two years, but we're trying to, you know, have this done as soon as possible. But this was something within the ordinance now to include the adjustment cap of 3.5%, which was, I think, something very reasonable that we've also heard from the audience.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to concur with Councilmember Manalo. Apparently, we've been waiting for this for two years, and it finally came to fruition. If we would have gotten this done a year and a half ago when it was first presented, we probably would not be trying to hit 15 by 2020. It's a year and a half, almost two years, since this first surfaced, and we're still trying to hit 15 by 2020? I don't think so. I cannot support that. I think we're threading a fine line between our businesses here in the city, and at the same time, I do want to see folks get a better wage. But to put an unnecessary racehorse in to try to catch up, which didn't happen a year and a half ago, it is not fair. And if we were to go ahead and try to do 15 by 2020, I would not approve it. I would want a study. I would want our businesses to get involved. I want this to be done all over again. What I'm thinking is, had this minimum wage ordinance not be presented as it was last month, what would we be doing now? And what would we be asking for? You still would be asking for 15 by 2020? I can't accept that. I did some research, and I went online, and I have the schedule here as to what the minimum wage and Councilmember Manalo made mention. But there's a last line to this. However, there is a caveat in the legislation that Brown signed. It includes a provision allowing the governor to postpone a wage increase in the event of an economic downturn. Now, I don't have a crystal ball, and if I did, I probably would not be here. We do not know what's going to happen in the next four to five years. And to encumber ourselves, being that we're in a structural deficit at this time, to encumber businesses with employees of over 25 that's saying in the next four or five years, we will not have an economic downturn, but yet we are asking for a guarantee of three, now you want to raise it to additional 3.5 of the CPI, not knowing what's going to happen four years ago, four years from now? I don't think it's feasible. I think what we ought to do is move forward, as Councilmember Manalo had made mention. The state says $13 an hour, we're 25 cents, 75 cents above that. By 2021, the state says $14 an hour, and we're a dollar an hour ahead. What more can we ask for, folks? Let's not basically bite the hand that feeds you. This is a great start. We're on our way, and we want to provide something, but let's not try to get it all at once. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments?
I have no comment.
No? Go ahead.
Yeah, just for clarification purposes is that I think that the issue, thank you, Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Sylvester and Councilmember Manalo for your comments. I just want to clarify that, first of all, that I did reach out to ASME and to FIRE, and they support the schedule, and it doesn't interfere with anything to have to do with equity. And they, the CPI 3.5, the 1350 as of July 1st, and also extensive language in also making sure that there's notification. Also, I want to make sure there's clarification that, once you said that the, Stephen, that is the policy that we, the council, guide to whether it affects the steps or not. So, in talking with these labor groups, it doesn't have to. It can only affect the people that are not up to, as per our purview and our decision, whether we decide only to make sure that people are up to make a minimum wage, because I think as a city, we can do that and not, you don't have to give a 5% jump to each person because it's not a raise. It's a law provided in 2016, and that, for me, that in $12, the dollar is not worth the same as when we had $10 an hour. People are really struggling, and for me, I know it's the end of the year, and so the $12, and then the 1350 July 1st, and then move, because other cities will already be 15, and that barring the fact that it's an ordinance and it doesn't cost us $600,000 as said before, because even the bargain group said they don't care, that people $20 an hour don't need the raise, it's an ordinance by the state. So that's what we're talking about, getting people there and trying to get them something, because we are losing people. And Safeway, they go next door to San Francisco to work, and they live in Daly City. And even though, yes, it's the corporation's responsibility, such as Ross paying $11 an hour, it's also why, for me, why I was elected to support the people that are struggling. So barring the fact that we can make the policy just on the fact, I don't know how the council feels on that, only on the minimum wage part, not a step for 5% going forward. So we have the money to at least do that part, and we owe it to the people that work in our city and to the people that live in our city. That's just how I am. Thank you. Where am I?
Does Steph want to add something? Go ahead.
Maybe I can just clarify a little bit. The step increases are kind of a side point because it's really the hourly ranges. We have H-101 is where it starts, and then it goes up to H-12. So we have 12 hourly ranges. And then under each hourly range, like H-101, for example, there's multiple types of workers and classifications, and when you enter that job, you start at step one, and you can go up to step five.
Sure.
The city maintains a 5% increase with all its steps for all workers. That's just kind of how we've done things. What we're talking about, when you apply a minimum wage, that sets the base rate for step one for H-101, and then you work the wage chart after that. That's totally up to you guys, really, to make that policy decision.
That's right.
So that's just the clarification there.
That's a policy decision, and there is a separate state law that is the minimum wage.
And for the last three years, HR has brought to the council the state law's minimum wage to increase that here, because we abide by that.
Right. So it's not necessary to increase 5% each, for each person after that?
So not to belabor this, and this is set by council. That's the policy that's set by council. However, just to give an example, for Recreator 1 classification, that's an hourly classification. We have a series, Recreator 1 through Recreator 5. If we were to only apply minimum wage to the Recreator 1, you know, adding, expediting it, there is a potential compaction issue for Recreator 2, 3, 4, 5. So that I start as a Recreator 1, there may not be an incentive for me to move up to 2 or 3 because we're only giving the expedited amount to the 1 level. That's one example. It may be the only example, but...
There's actually another example that I have here, and I can just read it to you. You know, with police officers, for example, there's compaction issues elsewhere, too, within the...
No, no offense, but can we not compare the police officers to our, to this? Okay.
Just, you know, this is just data from HR, you know? I'm just reading it. So if we kept adjusting all the ranges, okay, there's a regular full-time police officer who earns a certain amount, could it at some point earn less in base hourly rate than a per diem police officer? So there's a lot of nuances here with the rates and kind of compaction and equity and those kind of considerations that you just have to think about. But yes, exactly, like what Rose just said, if you decide to pass the ordinance, then at a later time, HR is going to bring to you the new wage chart to discuss.
We would still have to, we would still have to, Mr. Mayor, we would still, the clarification, it would still have to go through us to approve. Right. It's another...
Yeah. We don't adjust any wages until we bring that to you next, you know, after the ordinance goes in.
Okay. Mr. Giovanni, want to add something else?
Oh, no, just, you know, for me, comparing a police officer and somebody that's making a library aide or what have you at $11 an hour, I'm sorry, I don't see the, you know, I appreciate what you say, but that's a big difference. And again, it's staying with the, that's just my view, but...
Mr. Minister?
Thank you, Stephen, for that analogy. I understand it completely. No matter what the pay range is, no matter what job classification you have, there are compaction issues. This is different. Unions, for all unions, equal wages, paid what they should, but now you're trying to lump in the same basket those who are not part of the union, and it's totally different. Now you have businesses that are affected. When we're talking about Daly City and you're talking about the unions, you have the city that's affected. This is a different ball of wax. Now let's get back to the recreation. Are there any recreation folks who are making the minimum wage?
Yes, the Recreator...
Give me an example of how much they're making.
You have the chart?
Just an example.
Okay, for example, the Recreator 1 is currently, I would say, at, I think it's at $11.
$11.
An hour, yeah.
If we enact this ordinance, that person is going to go up to $12.
Yes.
Recreation Level 2.
Recreator 2...
I'm getting, my point's about to come clear. Go ahead.
Okay. I think they're at $15 and 3, or actually, they're, I'm not sure exactly what it lines up with on the sheet here, but it's...
Is it over 11?
Yes, yes.
I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt and give you 15. That's a difference of $4. If we pass this ordinance to avoid the compaction issue, the one at 11 will go up to 12. Would you bring up the one who's at 15 up $1 to avoid compaction?
Historically, that is what we have asked the council to do, but it is the council's determination.
Thank you very much. That's all I need.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Ms. Manalo?
Yeah, I do want to make a motion with amendment of the adjustment cap of 3.5% with the CPI included in the ordinance.
Okay, that's a motion for the city attorney to read by title only. Can I have a vote on that so that we're clear on the amendment?
All right. Roll call?
With the 3.5% cap on CPI.
Is that all we're voting for?
Just the amendment on the language for reintroduction.
Okay. Is that it? Okay.
So for clarification, Madam City Attorney, we cannot vote on this until it comes back to us with the revised language.
No, so basically, what we're doing this evening, because I had included the CPI language as part of the publication, this is an amendment to that. It's not entirely substantive. So we will be rereading it this evening by motion.
Okay.
Okay. We will be reading it by, so City Attorney, read by title only. It'll be included, and it'll be up for adoption, assuming it's passed, up for adoption at the January 14th meeting.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Just for clarification, again, it's just for the CPI.
Yes, the motion was to include it...
The 3.5.
Sure.
An adjustment cap.
Okay, for clarification, I will read it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Clarification, to modify the 3, to 3.5, it was 3%, and to also accept the current schedule.
So basically, the current language that is presented before you by way of motion will not change. We will be adding the cap to 3.5% to the CPI language. Essentially, this is in...
Page 2.
Yes, 8.76.
D.
D. The specific language will include, the change shall be calculated using the August-to-August change in CPI to calculate the annual increase, if any, not to exceed 3.5%. That would be the language included as by amendment.
For clarification, so it's be $12, 2019, and then 2020, it goes to...
1375.
1375.
221 will be $15, and then it'll go to CPI not to exceed 3.5% in 2022. That's the suggested motion on the table. Okay?
Okay. Let's have a roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
No.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Poynter Ventura?
Aye.
Okay, this is a motion for the city attorney to read by title only. This is an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Daly City, and Chapter 3, 8.76, minimum wage. I would request that the mayor or city council reintroduce the ordinance.
Let me have Ms. Manalo reintroduce the ordinance.
Motion to introduce the ordinance.
We need a vote?
No vote.
No? Okay, great. Thank you very much, everybody. Let's go on to public appearances, oral communications. I have no speaker cards, right? All right, let me go to appointments for boards and commissions. I have an appointment. I would like to reappoint Nancy Rodriguez to the Arts and Culture Commission. Apparently, her term has expired, so I make that motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we get a second. Can I get a, oh, no. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, she is reappointed. Any other appointments to commissions? Hearing none? Let me go on to...
Just through the chair, given that we may not have quorum on the Planning Commission, we will need an appointment on the Planning Commission...
Yeah, we know. Moving forward.
Fairly soon.
So the January...
Yeah, and they're not having a meeting.
Right.
Planning's not having a meeting.
We've lost two.
So noted. We will do that. Item number 22, council committee meetings. Any council committee reports? That would only be to Mr. Sylvester and Ms. Manalo.
I hear quite a few, but I'm, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Manalo?
Yeah, I, none for this evening, given the time constraint.
All right. How about city council reports? Any city council reports? Hearing none? Any staff reports? No staff reports? Great. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Is there any adjourned memories?
No.
I thought we had an adjourned memory list.
I just got a text that we did not have.
Oh, I actually remember now. So from what I saw on social media, I think Commissioner Walter Britara's mother, is that the mother? Passed away. So I'd like to adjourn in her memory, and I think that's the only one I noticed.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Zenada in the planning lost her brother.
Okay. Can we adjourn in memory of that as well?
Thank you.
Any other requests? If not, motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.